Hear me now, amen. We thank the Lord for just hearing Deacon Brinson's testimony. And on Sunday night, Brother Lamont Ben testified as well how the Lord set them up and connected them to be able to witness to someone, the Lord laid on my heart on Sunday to prepare us for the encounter this week. And so we've heard so far two people who the Lord has connected them to someone that they may share the goodness and the gospel of Jesus Christ. We thank God for those testimonies. Brother Lamont was, him and Sister Angela texted me Sunday night how the Lord allowed them to run into a young man who was looking for a church and they were able to share the gospel with him. So we thank the Lord for what he is doing. It all ties in even this song that was read tonight by the Deacon. It all ties into the faithfulness of God. Coming from the wrath of God, one thing we have to keep in mind is that when we forget God's wrath, we have to display our own wrath. When we forget God's wrath, we take it upon ourselves to flare up our wrath. And what it does exposes our belief that we think we must do God's job for Him. When we try to avenge or to attack someone, we're trying to take on God's job. But when there's an understanding of the wrath of the Lord, when there's an understanding of all that He has done and all that He will do, then we can rest assured tying in tonight's title or topic, the faithfulness of God. And so I know I've been saying this for 18 years and I thought last Wednesday was powerful, but I think tonight is going to be more powerful because as we break down and look deeper into it, it just amazes me, you know, just how wonderful and how mighty and how awesome God is. So tonight we want to look at the faithfulness of God. I wanted to dig a little deeper into the faithfulness of God to see where we stand, where He stands, to have an understanding. I was talking to one of my pastor friends and I was telling them how just having a greater insight and understanding on the character and nature of God really has tailored the prayers, it's really tailored my thoughts and ideas and understanding of the Lord. It has really helped me to not misdirect, not to place promises where He has not placed promises, and not to put demands where He has not put demands. And so it's really blessed me, it really has directed my steps a little more sturdier because of having a greater understanding of the nature and character of God. And so as you can see, it doesn't matter how many years in seminary, doesn't matter how many years in college, doesn't matter how long, you will always learn something about the Lord if you so desire, amen? So how many desire to know a little bit about the faithfulness, the faithfulness of God? Okay, so before we move on, it's a quote by the same fellow that you, I think he quoted last week, and he must be on a roll. So while he's on the roll, I want to make sure I write down everything he says. This week, he said this, he said, "All that God does agree with all that God is, for His acts are consistent with all of His attributes." All that God does agree with all that God is. So everything God does agrees with who He is. He will never do anything that does not agree with who He is. Everything He does, and this is very important because as we go through the study and as we journey from today, Wednesday on, our hearts should be strengthened in knowing that all that God does agrees with all that God is. Which means every act is consistent with His nature and His attributes. God will never do anything contrary to who He is. Everything will be consistent with who God is. Are y'all with me? Okay. So let's open up with, I think I got two or three questions I want to open up and this is where the class can participate. This is called class participation and I'm grading you on your class participation this year. The first question is this, what are some ways you tend to be unfaithful? What are some ways you tend to be unfaithful? Anyone?
Probably by not doing my devotion or reading my Bible the way that I should all the time.
Okay, okay. Sister Jasmine, that was good. You stepped out there and been bold. That's a humble expression. Anyone else?
I would say also I can, I think being unfaithful with my time, not managing my time appropriately.
Okay, okay. All right. Anyone else? What are some ways you tend to be unfaithful?
Yeah, I think, okay, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Deacon Abu.
Okay, I'm looking at, I'm talking, you know, from my own side. I believe I'm unfaithful not paying my time.
Okay, okay. All right. Not paying your time, is that what you said, Dee? Okay, all right. So Trusty Spears, if the lights go off, we know Deacon Abu is struggling with paying his time. Okay, all right. Sister Kenny?
Mine is prioritizing. Sometimes you know, you're trying to do too many things and when you do that and you make commitments and you know, so I feel like I'm being, that I should know better, you know, I should do a better job with that and I feel like I've let the Lord down. And then sometimes being hard-headed and doing what I want to do rather than listening to what the Holy Spirit is telling me to do about something.
Okay, okay. Love all the answers. It reminds us, those who are hearing and those who are saying or speaking, it reminds us that you're still human. It reminds us that you're still striving, you're still in the sanctification process. Anybody else? What are some ways you tend to be unfaithful?
Waiting on the Lord.
Okay, okay. Waiting on the Lord. Waiting on the Lord. Sometimes it don't think we have enough age in life to wait on Him. Sometimes it's seen as if it's going to take 100 years for the Lord to turn things around. And it causes us, when we allow our finite minds to get caught up, it causes us to now become unfaithful in waiting on the Lord. Anyone else?
Pastor, I would say unfaithful in our service, when we have opportunities to serve and we don't do it according to how we should. And then we often have times we complain about it, but yet we're not, we're not putting the effort in that we could to serve.
Amen. Good point. Being unfaithful in serving. Sometimes you want to ask yourself and ask others, who are you serving in order to do what He's asked you to do? If He is the Lord over your life, then why aren't you faithful in the things that He's asking you and I to do? In this case, it's serving others and putting others first before you think of yourself. Okay, all good answers. Here's another question I want to ask as we move into this topic. Can you explain how faith can be one way, but being faithful needs a relationship? I thought about that in my study. How faith can be one way, but being faithful needs a relationship? Can someone explain that?
I'll take a stab at it.
Okay.
Faith is because you believe in God. You believe in God, but faithful, faithful is trust in God, knowing to trust Him and knowing that He will stick to His word. He will deliver for you what He says He would in His word.
Okay, okay. Anybody else?
So the one thing I was thinking about was that faith is like, you know, a noun. It's just like basically what we have, what, it's an easy thing to do because it's just like a, not a one-time thing, but just you have faith. You can always say, oh, I have faith in God, oh, I have faith in God. The faithful is like the verb part and it's an action. So that's the part where we probably need a little bit more work on or to build that relationship in that, because that's the action part, being faithful to what we say that we believe in, like say what we believe in.
Okay, okay. So you can have faith and you can have it. But in order to be faithful, there has to be another side or another person or someone in doing something for you to be now faithful. Do you understand that? You can have faith. What triggers it into faithfulness or faithful is when there's someone else involved. Anybody want to add to that?
Yes, that, yeah, from what I'm, the way I'm looking at it, it seems like somebody, myself, I have faith that I will get to 90 years, 90 years in life. Then at the same time, you have your spouse that you are giving headache, even giving high blood pressure, and they pushing the person to die prematurely. Then how can you have faith of getting to 90 years and another person around you? Because you still have that relationship with that faith, that the same thing you said to yourself, you know, should apply to the other person. Then why you want to get to 90 and the other person around you, you know, you don't want to push the person to the grave at the age of 45?
Okay, okay, okay. All right. Anyone else want to add to this question? All right.
So Pastor, I would say along the lines of Sister Jasmine, faith, you can, you can just say you're, you have faith in something. You have faith in the, you have faith in a bridge that is not going to fall on you, but then the bridge falls, right? Because of something got shaken up inside of it. And it's just like our lives, we can say we have faith in God, but we know He is faithful, but are we faithful to Him? Because the least little thing that'll come our way, like Trusty Spears sung in her song in the song, throws a stumbling block in the way we find ourselves becoming faithless because we're not putting that faith to action and into work.
Okay, okay. All right. I think this is going to be an awesome teaching tonight. Deacon Thomas, are you ready or you want me to just move on?
Get a feedback.
Okay, you sound good now.
Okay, all right. So I was looking at faith and I have faith on Sunday, but then when I got down to the relationship part before I got deeper into my faith, I only had the relationship just on Sunday. So I had to come to the grips of myself that I had to have a relationship all seven days of the week. I couldn't just pick up that relationship on Sunday and expect to survive the rest of the week.
Okay, okay. All right. So faith can be one way. You can say I have faith, but when you speak of being faithful, then there's someone else on the other side that's calling you now to be faithful. You can have faith into a person. You can have faith into a person and if they have, they have no idea who you are or there's no response from them to you, there's no faithful. It's just faith. But when you are having faith towards a person and they are responding back to you and there's a relationship with you, then you can be faithful. Are y'all with me? Do y'all understand that? All right. All right. Let me get this other question and then we'll move forward. When is God's faithfulness painful? When is God's faithfulness painful?
Pastor, I would say when you're being stretched.
Okay, okay. When you're being... Okay, Rev?
I was going to add that part of His faithfulness for those that He calls His children is chastening when we need to be corrected. And that can be painful, although it's a good thing.
Okay, all right. When you're stressed, when you're being chastened by the Lord, and I got you, Trusty Spears, when there is no understanding, there will be rebuttal. When there's no understanding of who God is, what He's doing, it will cause us to turn away from the loving discipline or the loving guidance or the loving stretching that He's trying to do in our lives. I don't know how can one call themselves a child of God and not seek after Him to have an understanding of the life He's calling you to live? How can you walk each day and not have or try to strengthen relationship with the Lord, but expect to be guided through this new life in Him for you? Trusty Spears?
Amen. I wanted to look at it from a different angle as well and say that God's faithfulness is painful when we have faith that He's going to, you know, bring us through, but it's silent, it's quiet, and it's painful because you don't know, that faith says, I know the Lord's going to work this out, but it's painful because you don't know when, you don't know how, and you, that faith has to be put in practice. And to build that faithful relationship, you have to tell yourself, Lord, I know you're faithful to me, I know you're going to pull me through. And speaking for me, it just gets painful when I don't, I don't hear, don't know, and that's the pain part, because now I'm trying to remain faithful, but that can be painful sometimes.
Okay. I think sometimes our faith is in the, then the faith is in our own strength. Now I want you to understand this. Sometimes we, we say we're having faith in God, but faith in our own strength to the height of our belief is to the point where we're tired or the point where we are finished following. And so we call that faith in God, but actually we having faith in ourselves. And what causes us to fall apart is that we have been applying the faith in ourselves and not faith in God. Now, and I'm going to explain all this, because many can say, I have faith until a trial come, until a situation that shakens you, until now you're at day 90, when you thought it would be finished in day 30. You said you have faith when is, when you're comfortable with the trial, meaning there's nothing really pulling from you, tugging from you, or required of you to the point of Job's level. You know when you have faith is when you have run out of all of your resources and yet you're still holding. You know you have faith when, when all hope in yourself and man is gone, yet that's the evidence of things not seen because of what you know about God. Am I clearing some things up right now? Because it's going, it's going to get deep. I can, I can see it on your faces that you're ready to swim. You remember, the Bible says, "Now faith is the substance of things hopeful, the evidence of things not seen." If I can still see it, if I can still figure it out how it can come about, if I'm still trying to work a plan out, if I'm still trying to walk, walk it out my way, then I'm implying the faith I have in me, but I'm using God as the title of my faith. But when I have true faith, then what, all I can say to you is, I don't know how it's going to come about, but one thing I do know for sure, that God has a plan for me in my situation. That's faith, that's faith, because He doesn't have to show me anything, but He wants me to trust Him for everything. Are y'all with me here?
Because you know, Pastor, that's when you, and that's when you have to, that's where that let go and let God, you have to really let it go. You have to release it. Stop pulling on it, tugging with it, trying to, you know, twist yourself up in a pretzel. That's when you have to let it go and say, Lord, I give it to you and really let it go. Lord, help me to, if you have a problem, let Him help you to let it go. And then when you're able to do that, that releases it, that takes away the pain, the stress, because the pain is really the, to me is, for me is, when I'm tugging and pulling with it, you know? It's stretching me, it's pulling me and I'm like, ah, okay, Lord, you know? But once I'm ready, okay, God, you have this, I'm giving this over to you, take this from me. That I believe is when the pain is released from you and you're able to go on about your daily, you know, daily duties, you know, through the day, because you have a knowing in your spirit that He's God's God. It's when it's clicked, it's like, okay, my Father's got that.
Amen, amen. And I think I said this Sunday, the buzzwords and the shop, Christian shop talk must come with explanation. Thank you, Sister Kenny, for explaining the let go, let God, because immediately I could tell someone, let go and let God, that's shop talk, that's Christian shop talk, that's, those are buzzwords. But what does that mean? When I have to let go and let God, that means I'm letting go of my hope in myself and then I'm letting God do what He promised and proved Himself to be able to do. That's to handle whatever comes, comes my way. Okay, let's just get into this. The Hebrew word translated as, as faith is efuna. Efuna is almost always translated as faithfulness instead of faith. It's the Hebrew word efuna. Efuna is where we've gotten our English word faithfulness. Some would translate as faith, but this is where we get our word faithfulness. And we also see words like firmness, when we look at the word efuna, we will see other translated words like firmness, steadfastness, loyalty, responsibility, stability, steady, trust and true. All these are related to the Hebrew word efuna, all right? Efuna. So in the Hebrew, efuna, it means these translated words, firmness, steadfastness, fastness, stability, steady, faithfulness, to be true or true. All these are related to this, this Hebrew word. But the word efuna also comes from the root word amen, which means to securely trust or to believe. This is where we get our word amen from. Amen come from the root word efuna, firmness, truth, trustworthy, steadfastness. But out of efuna, the root word, we get also amen or amen or amen. All right? Which means that's true or that's, that's of surety, surety. All right? So out of efuna, we get, the root word, we get amen, which means secure or trust or to believe, to believe in. Are y'all with me here? Now, just let me start off as a teacher, y'all know how. Let me start off as a teacher and then I go and, you know, sometimes I fall into my preaching, but let me just start off as a teacher, so that we can get an understanding of, of this Hebrew word efuna for faithfulness. So when we say amen to God's word, it involves a heartfelt commitment to His faithfulness against all odds. So when we read God's word or speak of God's word and we say amen, what it does, it involves this, this commitment to His faithfulness. So when we say, "Blessed is the man that walketh not in the counsel of the ungarnie," and one say amen, that's a heartfelt commitment to His faithfulness, to His word and to His promises and to His commands and to who He is. It is a trust that says, even if God says no to my prayer, I would trust that He knows best. Can anyone say amen? Amen, just, just amen. Okay, efuna.
Hallelujah, amen, amen.
To the steadiness, the firmness, the surety, to the truth, the trustworthy, one who I can believe in. Amen is out of the root word efuna, which means faithfulness. And one of the most pivotal passages in the Old Testament where efuna is used is in, Rev Greeney, I'm gonna have you turn these scriptures here, Habakkuk 2:4. Let's look at that, Habakkuk chapter 2, verse 4. Let's look at that before we move on. Rev, if you got it, you can read it.
Okay, Habakkuk 2:4, "Behold, his soul is puffed up. It is not upright within him, but the righteous shall live by faith."
Okay. The righteous shall live by efuna, faith, all right? This is what Habakkuk is saying, all right? And so to me, this is one of the most pivotal passages in the Old Testament, because it shares with us the Hebrew word efuna, that the righteous shall live by faith. And then later Paul, he quotes the same verse in Romans, chapter 1, verse 17. What does that say?
For in the righteousness of God is revealed from faith for faith, as is written, the righteous shall live by faith.
Okay. The righteous shall live by faith, not within ourselves, but faith in who God is. And we are New Testament believers, who God is in Christ Jesus and all that Christ has done for us. And so the righteous shall live by efuna, 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 okay? Turn to Galatians, chapter 3, verse 11.
It reads, "Now it is evident that no one is justified before God by the law, for the righteous shall live by faith."
Okay. We shall live by faith, but faith in who? In God, all right? That the righteous will live by his efuna. We shall live by our faith or faithfulness to God. All right? So faith lived out is faithfulness. If it's not lived out, then you just have some faith. But faith lived out is faithfulness. And you and I as righteous, you and I as believers, we shall live by our efuna to God's faithfulness, which causes us to be faithful to His faithfulness. Are y'all with me so far? All right? So you and I, we should live by efuna, we should live by our faith, we are living by our faith. Do you, do you not know you're living in hope that Christ will return for His own? Do you not know that? Do you know how strong that faith is? Do you know how strong? And let me tell you how strong that faith is. The faith is so strong in who and what God has done and the work He has done in Christ Jesus, that you believe that your name, have you seen your name written? Did anybody see a hand in the sky? that your name, have you seen your name written? Did anybody see a hand in the sky and your name being written? Has anybody heard God say, no, I got your name. I got your back. You okay? Do you not know as children of God, we're living by efuna?
Glory.
On his faithfulness? Do you know that when the sky cracks, I trust that God will take me home? My faith is in his faithfulness and I get my faithfulness based on his reputation of being faithful. That's why I know I'm a child of God, because my faith is built on his faithfulness. Are y'all with me here? So faith lived out is faithfulness. Okay? When we study God's word, a pattern develops. We learn that God never changes and never lies. Get these scriptures for me, Rev. The reason why we study Bible study, come to church fellowship, remind each other, testify, glorify, worship, praise God. The reason why we sing songs of Zion, it, it helps us to understand the pattern of God. We study God's word and a pattern develops. Here's the pattern. Numbers twenty-three nineteen says what? In ESV.
God is not a man that he should lie.
Okay, here's, hold on one second, Rev. Okay, here's a pattern is getting there to develop. The reason why I can have my faith in him. He's developing, is developing a pattern through the word. The reason why I read the word, so that I can see a pattern, a pattern of God developing. Numbers twenty-three nineteen, go ahead, read again, Rev.
God is not a man that he should lie, or a son of man that he should change his mind. Has he said and will he not do it? Or has he spoken and will he not fulfill it?
Now, highlight that, underline, underline that, whatever you need to do, because when we read the word of God, we are looking for, see, you read the word of God, you see Christ in everything, you see the love of God through everything, you see the working of God through everything, but then you also should notice a pattern of God. One thing I do know throughout the whole sixty-six books and even those who were written, but did not make it to the canon of scriptures, one thing I do know, God cannot lie. Now, I'm so, listen, I don't know about you, but I'm so glad that it's not even a inkling that God lied, because that means my salvation is on the line. One thing I'm glad about that I saw in the pattern that was developed through the word of God was that God can not lie. Now, I don't know if, if you need to write this or not, but put in your Bible, put it on piece of paper and make it be, God cannot lie. Okay, first Samuel, chapter fifteen, verse twenty-nine in ESV, Rev.
And also the glory of Israel will not lie or have regret, for he is not a man that he should have regret.
Okay, y'all, you, you know what? This is gonna be a highlighting night. Alright, Sister Esther, so just keep your highlight, just keep the top off, cause you gonna highlight these. Uh, he is not going to do anything that he regrets. And I'm glad he don't even regret saving me. In other words, Diggins Brinson, he saved me on purpose. It wasn't no accident. It was, it was no accident. I ain't didn't stumble up on God. He saved me on purpose. So the pattern I'm seeing, one is he don't lie. He cannot lie. Two is, he will not retract anything he has done. Because God's way is sure. So the faithfulness of God is the foundational, is foundational to our faith. Someone says, I got faith. I got faith that God's gonna work it out. Well, what you got, what's your foundation? The faithfulness of God? I can start right there. I can show you throughout the Bible is faithfulness. So the faithfulness of God is the foundational, is foundational to our faith. The foundation, the base of our faith is on his faithfulness. When he said he would do something, he did it. Numbers eleven, twenty-three, ESV. This is the pattern of development. The reason why we call him faithful God. Or God that is faithful because of his pattern, because of his reputation, because of who he is. Numbers, chapter eleven, verse twenty-three.
And the Lord said to Moses, is the Lord's hand shortened? Now you shall see whether my word will come true for you or not.
See that? God's sure of the things he said he would do. He said, now you'll know. Uh, you'll see. Matter of fact, Malachi says, will I not open up a window? And pull out a, but, but try me and see. Most of the times our trying wears out because our hope and faith is in ourselves. And many times that's because you don't know nothing about God. You see, here's the thing, the, uh, me and uh, my pastor friend, we just going back and forth when we just talking, uh, you can't tell Christians nothing because they know everything. But they don't know nothing. Because if they knew something, they will hold on to God's unchanging hand. The pattern he sees is he don't lie. He'll show you what he said. And he won't retract anything because my faith is built on his faithfulness. Matthew's chapter twenty-four, verse thirty-five.
Heaven and earth will pass away, but my words will not pass away.
Okay, that's another one you might want to highlight. He's saying, let me show you how sure my words is and how faithful I am to myself. Heaven and earth will pass away before my word comes back to me void. We begin to build trust upon his proven character. So so far, we read some scriptures and we're seeing a pattern of the character of God. And this is what we're seeing about the nature of God, one thing that he's faithful. Can we all agree on that? Okay, he's faithful. Now, it ain't based on, well Pastor, I asked him to do something, who are you? Okay, God would do whatever he wants to do, but that has nothing to do with the character and nature of God. Can we all agree, just give me a thumbs up, that God is faithful? Okay, I'm gonna prove it even more for those who, who thumbs came up kind of slow. So to know that God is faithful, biblically speaking, is to know him as reliable, stable and sure. Descriptions of God as our rock and strong tower are images used in scripture to do what? Help us grasp his great faithfulness. Proverbs eighteen, verse ten. In other words, we're saying, how faithful is God? So scriptures will give us images to give us an idea of the faithfulness of God, of the stableness of God, of the sureness of God, faithfulness. Okay, Proverbs, chapter eighteen, verse ten, what does it say?
The name of the Lord is a strong tower. The righteous man runs into it and is safe.
The name of the Lord is a strong tower. Now remember, we are learning about him through the word. We are seeing the pattern of God's faithfulness. And to know that he's reliable and that he's stable, what the Bible does, not only does God speak of himself, but the Bible gives us images to relate to the faithfulness of God. Psalm sixty-two, verse six.
He only is my rock and my salvation, my fortress. I shall not be shaken.
The reason why the psalmist can, cannot and shall not be shaken, because his faith is in the faithfulness of God. See, this is, this is scary and, and you gotta watch out because your flesh will laugh at you when you say this. When you start to say, I don't know what is gonna come about from this, but I have faith in God. Now, doesn't that sound silly to the flesh? That sounds so silly to the flesh. Matter of fact, you gotta be careful because your flesh will start uh, uh, picking on you and making you feel like you're foolish. Uh, but, but my faith is based on his faithfulness. So one thing I do know is that my faith is in God and not myself. Are y'all with me so far? Okay? For God to be unfaithful would be to act contrary to his nature. This is so powerful. For him to be unfaithful, Sister Rhonda, he has to act contrary to who he is. In other words, that's like trying to make him become something he will never be. That's what that means. It will be contrary to his nature. This is so powerful and, and, and so wonderful to hear that for him to be unfaithful, it will be contrary to his nature. His own word and his own character. He is not capable of unfaithfulness. We haven't even gotten into a deep yet and I'm getting excited already. Uh, uh, Sister Renee, even if he wanted to, he couldn't. Because he's not capable of being unfaithful because it's not his character. Okay, okay, let me help y'all. Even if I wanted to fly, Deacon Brinson, I couldn't. Cause I'm not capable of flying.
Alright, alright.
It's not my nature. Are, are y'all with me? For me to fly, it would have to be some form of imitation than who I am.
My God.
For God to be unfaithful, it would be him trying to do something that he can never be. Ah, this is good to know.
Hallelujah.
This is good to know. Uh, he's not capable. Good God almighty. See, see, you gotta watch out from the flesh, you gotta watch out from the enemy and you gotta watch out for people. Uh, because people are given word off their own strength. What causes us to be faithful to him is that he is not capable of being unfaithful. He always has been, is, and he will remain faithful. I'm gonna try to, I'm gonna try to drill this in. I'm gonna try to drill this in, because ain't no need to pray it if you don't believe this. Ain't no need to touch and agree with your neighbor. If you don't believe this, you have to know for yourself that he is not capable of being unfaithful. Now, I have to know what he promised, what he commanded, what he said he'll favor, what he said he'll do. This is one thing I do know, Digger Thomas, one thing that he's faithful to. It is, it just, he said, as long as the earth remains seed time and harvest. That's the faithfulness of God. Uh, that's faithfulness. So you can talk about global warming, you can talk about the sun gonna burn things out, yet God said, as long as this earth is here, there's gonna be seed time and harvest. Don't listen to man, don't let man get you all disturbed, don't let man get you worked up. As long as this earth is remaining, there's gonna be seed time and harvest. He is not capable of being unfaithful. Am I helping anybody so far? Okay. God's faithfulness cannot be defined by our perception as to whether or not events or circumstances work out in what we perceive to be our favor. So you can't define, see, you see, you gotta watch out. Well, uh, you know what? Uh, maybe it's gonna thin out the church, but you know what? Who all stand will stand in truth. You hear people saying, you know, God's faithful. That's because you got your house. He ain't faithful because you got your house. He been faithful because he woke you up this morning. And even if he didn't wake you up this morning, he's still faithful. But we have been defining our faith in God and God's faithfulness based on circumstances that works in our favor.
My God.
And people are so quick to put on social media, hold up their keys and take pictures and God's faithful, God is good. Can I tell you something? Even if you die, he's still good. Even if the world comes to an end, he's still good. Because he's not capable of being unfaithful and is contrary to his nature. So we can't define the faithfulness of God with our perception whether or not the events or circumstance worked in our favor. And many of us have been treating God as if he's unfaithful because our circumstance didn't turn out the way we wanted it to turn out. Oh man, I'm gonna read a lot of mail today. I got, I got a desk full of mail right here. Uh, because it didn't turn out the way we thought, we think God is unfaithful. Instead of saying, thank you Lord for being faithful, because I have no idea what was gonna turn out, how it was gonna become. I don't know how it was gonna work out. I don't know if that was gonna turn around and bite me. I don't know if that was gonna make me sick. I don't know if that was gonna depress me. I don't know if that was gonna turn me around. I don't know if that was gonna make me turn my back on you. And Lord, even though it did not work in my favor the way I thought, thank you for being faithful. There are some things that happened in my life years ago that I did not understand in my walk with the Lord, but can I tell you something? I'm so glad he was faithful. God is faithful even if events don't turn out as we wish or think they should.
Glory.
He is still faithful. I'm drilling this. I'm drilling this because we gonna have a glorious time tonight. How many believe God is faithful?
Hallelujah.
Yeah, Daddy.
Go for it.
Uh, yeah, there is, uh, more, this word, uh, more, uh, trust is spare. Uh, use that word and that word, you know, have been really working for me and they, uh, and I can't get it out of my mind, you know, based on what you just said. There's something she said about, he said, she said that uh, the thing that worries you could be the thing, the same thing that is saving you. The things that worries you could be the same thing that is saving you. So, uh, you know, walking in your life and doing the things he's doing, he's doing what he's doing is, God, you don't know exactly what he is doing because he's working for your own good. You might not see it, but he's working for your own good because he's a faithful God.
Amen. And, and what we have to understand is God's faithfulness is not our faithfulness. I'm, I'm explaining that even more. I'm gonna go even deeper. We are trusting in a God who is, who is faithful, not who shall be, who can be, who's capable of, who is faithful. We are serving a God who cannot be unfaithful. And this is gonna, this gonna tweak your prayers a little bit more, uh, because when you get finished praying to the Lord, you stand up and you thank him for being faithful to his word. God will never deny his own character for him. To do otherwise, he will become unfaithful if he deny his own character. It will make him be unfaithful. He can't deny his own character. Someone says, uh, 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 you a bird. I said, no, I'm a man. I can't deny who I am. Are you with me? Now, you can call me a bird all you want. That's your opinion, your perception. But that's not who I am. So because God doesn't work out of circumstance in your life and some- So, because God doesn't work out of circumstance in your life and some, many in the world, and there's some unbelievers who backslidden, who have now looked and saw and seen God as being unfaithful, don't even realize that God can't deny his character.
My God.
God does not have to work at being faithful. He is faithful. He's not working at it. You working at it. I'm working at it. He's not working at it.
Hallelujah.
See, so, we, we go through our lives as Christians as if God's working on some stuff and I'm working on some stuff. Yeah, I'm working on my faithful, God working on stuff. God said, "No, no, no, I am that who I am. You are what I want you to be."
Teach it Pastor.
But, you can't change I am. Okay? If you, if you research that etymological study, "I am," I am, it means, "I will be that I will be." That's what that meant. You can't name nothing that he can't be. You cannot get in a situation that he cannot be faithful to bring you out. The, okay, okay, here it is, here it is. The greatest faithfulness of God was in Christ Jesus. Oh, the greatest moment for you and I was his faithfulness. Didn't know Christ could've called angels, went back, seated, and left us here. But, his faithfulness in the Father, God's faithfulness in the work of his Son, is where we build our faithfulness to him on. Now, here it is. If you can't have faith in God, you got to show me where he was unfaithful. Oh, I, I want somebody to prove from Genesis 1, prior to Genesis 1. Genesis 1 is the recording of the work of God. But, you have to show me where he's been unfaithful for me not to have faith in him. Any comments, any concerns? Let's go deeper. Human integrity is exposed to temptation. Human integrity is exposed to the appeal of curiosity and pleasure. And if we put loyalty and truth to a test, it's often fatal to its stability. We can't handle. It's, listen, it's a challenge to be faithful. It's a challenge to have faith, which is why the Comforter, the Spirit of God, has come to give us faith in God. If you had it, you would've saw him a long time ago. You ain't had that type of faith. Your faith was limited to man and your own resource and abilities. Because of who we are, our integrity is exposed. God's integrity is not exposed to temptation, is not exposed to curiosity, is not exposed to pleasure. But, ours is. And when our loyalty and truth is put to test, it's often fatal in being stable. Okay, I, I know. Well, go ahead Pastor, you can say it. You, you was, you faithful now because we talking about it, but last night you wasn't that faithful. You were, you were faithful now because we talking about it, but last week you wasn't that faithful. Uh-huh, when it's put to test, when pleasure comes around, when curiosity is there, uh, you wasn't as faithful. God has to keep increasing. He has to keep working it out. He has to keep you in the Word so that you can see the pattern of his faithfulness. If not, you would not be faithful to him. The intentions of men are often connected with an awful level of unforeseen circumstances, which decreases us incapable or unwilling to perform those actions towards God. Our intentions are often connected with unforeseen. The reason why we struggle to be faithful is because of them unforeseen circumstances. Pastor, go ahead, T. Go ahead. Can we be honest? Uh, here it is, Sister Kenny. Uh, if he could just show me, I can be faithful. The struggle is, Sister Renee, is those unforeseen circumstances that I have to really be faithful.
My God.
Uh-huh. Uh, you, you got, you got $10,000 in the bank and, and you wanna buy something for $1,000. You say, "I'm gonna have some faith." Hey, man, you ain't gotta have no faith. You got $10,000 in the bank. What you looking for is only $1,000. But, put $2 in the bank and you need something for $1,000 and say, "I'm gonna trust that God's gonna work it out." That's faith.
Amen.
Pastor. Go for it.
What you're describing reminds me of Hebrews 11. We may touch on that later, I'm not sure. But, at the beginning of Hebrews 11, by faith, all these folks received. But, at the end of Hebrews 11, those people didn't get what they received, but they were still faithful unto death, believing that he would do it.
Good point, good point, good scripture. And I think 11, Hebrew 11, uh, what is it? Hebrews 11, what, Rev? Find that for me because every Christian needs to see this. And we have argued that theologically in class, that many didn't see, but they still believed. Because his faithfulness don't stop or is not limited to my life or my finite thinking. Because our intentions are normally connected with the, the level, the awful or the terrible level of unforeseen circumstances. If God could just show me, I can trust him. You see how easy that is? You see how easy that is, uh, uh, Sister Byrne? If he could just show me, I'd trust him. If he could just show me, you know, if he could just, you know, like the Scrooge movie, uh, just take me, let me see my past, my present, my future, and then I go back to my present and I could work it out now. If God could just show me everything to the end, I'll come back and you won't even bother me. You can say what you want, he won't even get on my nerve because I already know. But, that's not faith. What's the scripture, Rev?
Hebrews, uh, chapter 11, beginning at verse 36. It reads, "Others suffered mocking and flogging and even chains and imprisonment. They were stoned, they were sawn in two, they were killed with a sword. They went about in skins of sheep and goats, destitute, afflicted, mistreated, of whom the world was not worthy, wandering about in deserts and mountains and in dens and caves of the earth. And all of these, though committed through their faith, did not receive what was promised, since God had provided something better for us, that apart from us, they should not be made perfect."
Still believing, still believing. Now, here's what we gotta watch out for. We gotta watch out for making promises and putting God's name on it. Gotta be careful with that. Making promises and putting God's name on it. God said he gonna do that. He gonna, God said he gonna work it out. Did God say that? You know, I, I tell a person a minute, everybody, you know, everybody's tapping God's name on everything. God's name is on everything. God told me do this. God said this. God, everybody's saying God say that. And what happens is, it's caused those who are truly believing to fall short in their faith because they seeing a lot of this prophylining falling short. And they, and those, especially those who are babes in Christ, they applying those who they thought knew the nature and character of God. They are putting their trust and seeing them as a pattern. And because things are falling short, it causes them to quiver in their faith in God. Oh, boy. Somebody just give me a wave, let me know you still on Bible study. Okay, all right. We can see God's, go for it, go for it.
That's why you gotta be careful who you let speak over your life, over your children's life. Because when people just start speaking from their flesh, just trying to make it seem like God is talking and God is moving, it will literally mess you and your family members up. Um, and I can say from personal experience, person says something about my son, and that's all, out of everything that was said to him by every other man of God that he's been close to, the one person that made a comment to him and said, "God told me," that's all my son remembers.
Yeah.
And it was negative.
Saints, we have to be careful because God will show his hand and he'll show, "I didn't say that." And when you have others who are following you, Paul said, "Follow me as I follow Christ." For those who are following you, we have to be cognizant of what we're saying out of our mouths about who God is, what God promised, what God commanded. That's why you stick to the Word. Because the Word will always give a pattern of his faithfulness. We can see God's faithfulness to his word. Joshua said, "No one word of all his good promises has failed." This is a pattern. Not one word that he said failed. Jesus said it. Your word is truth. F munah is stable, is steadfast, is sure. Your word is truth. You with me so far? Both the Old Testament and the New Testament echo the message that all that God has recorded to us in his inspired word may be trusted and that the Bible supplies us with reliable and dependable information and instruction that one can rely upon with certainty. Now, of course, you have to be careful with the translations, the paraphrasing Bibles, the translation, the revise, the revise, the revise, the revise. It's like 50 revives. This is why you have to do a study of the Word of God. It's why you got to go a little beyond and know some history. You gonna have to do some studying on the life that you're living. You just can't read a magazine. You can't read just a magazine, a Christian magazine. You can't just read a devotional. You can't just look at an app. I think you know and understand the life of a believer. You have to study the Word of God in order to know that I could depend on his faithfulness. I can see it on your face. Too many people have broken some precious promises, which led us to some serious consequences. Each time that someone failed to keep his or her promise, we built emotional walls up higher than we ever thought that was possible. In order to keep ourselves safe, we learned to keep people out. That's because people have broken some precious promises and it has led us to serious consequences. And it has caused us to build emotional walls. What has happened is, we make God pay for it.
Yes.
He pays for the mistakes of others. For all the people who have proven to be unreliable, we associate their nature with God's nature. And we stare at the promises of God and demand that we receive a deadline of when they will come to pass. Because people done hurt me. Too many people have told me they gonna come through. Too many people said they gonna be there and they wasn't there. Too many people said they gonna hold out. Too many people said they gonna work out with me and they have failed me. And so, I don't trust nobody. And what happens is, God pays for the mistakes of man's tainted livelihood.
Jesus.
And what has happened is, we have associated the nature of man with the nature of God. Pastor, help us out a little bit. You, you, you know, you said it. Don't act like you ain't said it. I can see it on your face. You done said it before. I ain't trusting nobody because that one person right there, I mean, I really trust that. I put my whole heart in that. And now, they have made me so now I don't trust nobody. I don't want nobody saying it to me. Don't promise me nothing. Don't give me nothing. Don't say you gonna be with me. Don't say you gonna walk with me to the end. I don't wanna hear none of that. And then, when it comes to God, we treat God the same way.
Yes, we do.
To the point, we asking him to do something. Drop a leaf, let a bird come on my window sill. Lord, let somebody knock on my door at midnight hour. Lord, just do something. Turn a page with the wind. Lord, let something happen. So, I know this is true. And what we're trying to get God to do is to prove, because man has proved to be unfaithful and now we allow man's nature to switch over. And we treat God like man. He's not a man. Numbers 23:19. You better put that down, you better write that down. He's not your BFF. He's not your cousin. He's not your auntie. He's not your uncle. He's not your enemy. He's not your friend. God is not a man that he should lie. When God says something, he's gonna come through with what he said. Didn't he not save you?
Yes, he did.
Didn't he not keep you? Didn't he not snatch you out of the mouth of a defeated foe? Didn't he not write your name in the Lamb Book of Life? Whatever God says, he's gonna come through. And I can build my faith on his faithfulness.
Jesus.
We confuse God's reliability with our expect-
Pastor lock up or is that me?
He locked up. Pastor, you froze.
So, saints, we gonna pray that the Lord is moving even right now and that we are coming back together because this word is rich.
Yes, it is.
We are praying and believing even right now that this technology will work in Jesus' name. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. Amen, amen. Hallelujah. For those who may be on the phone, we are experiencing a little technical difficulty. But, by faith, we believe that we are going to come back into this study tonight because we gonna get to the end of this story.
Glory.
Um, Sister Jasmine is, is right now working with Pastor to get him back online, um, back up and running. So, that's where we're at right now.
Amen. Just hold what you got.
Uh, faith is being tested. He about to come back.
But, this is for you trusting spirits to start singing that song, "Greatest Die Faithfulness." Because Pastor sings that all the time.
Yes, yes, yes.
Look like he's back up. Pastor, you back up, moving around?
Okay, okay. Can everyone hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay.
Glory.
Give me one second, give me one second. Okay, can everyone hear me? We know the devil is a liar. This is gonna be a powerful teaching tonight.
Amen.
All right, let's move on. We confuse God's reliability with our expectations of how he should do it. We confuse that, how God should bring things about or how God should do things. We confuse that, how God should bring things about or how God should do things. And our, listen, our faith, believe it or not, is rested on our expectations and not his faithfulness. When God doesn't do things the way we want it and when he want it and when we want it, we decry his methods and questions his motives. That's what happens. When it's not done the way we want it and when we want it, we question his motives behind what he's doing. Have anybody ever been guilty of that? Questioning the motives of God because he didn't do the thing or things the way I wanted it or when I wanted it. And I question his methods and his motives. I'm gonna tell you some other people questioned. I'm sure, without a doubt, those black folk that were at that Red Sea questioned, "Why in the world are we looking at an ocean?" Now, if you don't think they ain't questioning that, then you sadly mistaken and you need to read it more. Because the Lord, God told Moses to tell the people, because evidently in their mind, out of their mouth and in their actions, they was questioning his methods and his motives. So God said, "Moses, tell the people to stand still and see." When he doesn't do things the way we want them and when we want them, what we do? We question his methods and his motives. Turn to Lamentations. I'm gonna read this, Rev. Lamentations, chapter three, verse 21. I see some people still trying to log on. I pray that you can get back on. All right, Lamentations. And let me just put this commercial in here. It's amazing. Right in the midst of Bible study, my internet wants to go out and then comes back on. You know, it wants to recess itself on Wednesday during Bible study time. But we give God glory. Lamentations, chapter three, verse 21. "This I recall," circle that. "This I recall," Jeremiah says, "to my mind. Therefore have I hope." I'm gonna explain this scripture to you. "It is of the Lord's mercy that we are not consumed, because his compassions fail not." I want you to circle mercies. I want you to circle compassions and I want you to underline, fail not. Verse 23, "They are new every morning." "Great is thy faithfulness," circle that. The Lord, verse 24, "is my portion, set my soul; therefore will I hope in him." Verse 25, "The Lord is good unto them that wait for him," underline that. I think Brother Bruce said that. Says, can he say this well? "To the soul that seeketh him." Verse 26, "It is good that a man should both hope and quietly wait for the salvation of the Lord." Okay. Let me say this before I break the scripture down. We have to learn how to quietly wait. When we start speaking out of turn, we're not waiting on the Lord. God doesn't move the way you think he moved and as rapid as the way you think and want him to move. He is moving, but we always looking at him moving in the way we want him to move and forget that he's moving in a way we cannot see him move. Right now, he's moving. But because we don't see results the way we want to see them, we think God is not moving. Do you not know throughout the whole pandemic, he was still moving? Do you not know that in his moving, he showed you some friends and some family who was not in line with the will of the Lord in your life? But you didn't see that. I know that. But he was moving. Yes, he was. So he was moving even though I didn't see him moving. Okay. One of the interesting things about this passage is that for 24, for 20 verses before this, the writer has listed all his struggles and afflictions. Life is hard. Life is tough. Life is full of pain and difficulty. Before I explain a bit more of the scripture, let me just throw it out there. I remember talking to my daughter two weeks ago and I told her, "Pain happens. Suffering is optional." Life is hard. It's tough. It's full of pain and difficulty. I don't have to suffer because I'm standing on the faithfulness of God.
Glory.
That's what Jeremiah says. There is something that gives him hope in Lamentations. One, God loves him. God is faithful and God shows compassion. She was gonna give him hope. I'm gonna help somebody tonight. Notice during this time of this writing, the city was sitting lonely at one time that was full of people. And Jeremiah looks back to the glory days of Jerusalem. It had been a city of great power and majesty. So the book itself consists of five poems lamenting or crying or mourning the terrible destruction that came upon Jerusalem at the hands of the Babylonians. So he's writing his tears. The people are mourning because of all that has happened to Jerusalem. And Jerusalem here is personified as the daughter of Zion. So she didn't consider her future and she fell into spiritual har- har- hatred. Then we talked about that with Haggah. And has, what happened? They have now fallen. And Jeremiah had seen it all. He saw this coming to pass. And he did not say, "I told you so." He begged his people to return to God or else. Instead, what Jeremiah does, he suffers with them. Oh, this is powerful. But there is one thought that keeps Jeremiah going. What kept him going was as stern as God's discipline had been to them. He is still a God moved by loving kindness and compassion. All right, this is gonna be powerful here. He was not only faithful to correct them when they needed it, but he was also faithful and merciful to pick them back up after correcting them. So in fact, Jeremiah said, "This I recall." Good God almighty. I'm preaching that. I'm gonna preach that. I'm gonna preach that. They're going, Jerusalem is just going through it. I mean, they are suffering. What's gonna bring me hope that it won't last like this always?
My God.
We're failing. The people, many were crying to the Lord. They were mourning. This is poems of lamenting, of crying to God? How long would this last? And I don't know who I'm talking to in this Bible study, but sometimes you'll be crying and you're praying, "How long would this last?" And then I recall to my mind. All right. Okay, okay. With all that's going on, I remind myself that I'm holding the hands of a faithful God. In other words, Peter, you walked on water. You let the storm get in the way. You drowned, but I got right down there and picked you up. I trust God's faithfulness.
Jesus.
"This I recall to my mind." All right, can we move on? The Hebrew word used for mercies in this scripture or for favor or for loving kindness is hesed. And it has the sense of loyal love, commitment love or committed love or settled love. In other words, this love is not about any kind of superficial attraction, nor is it a response to someone's goodness. I recall him catching me when I didn't want to catch myself. I recall him loving me when I didn't want to love myself. I recall him being faithful even when I wasn't faithful to him. This I recall to my mind. It was nothing but the hesed. It was nothing but the mercy. It was nothing but the loyal love. It was nothing but the committed love of God that I'm not consumed.
Hallelujah.
Why? Because his compassion never fails. Oh, boy. It never fails. Sister, Sister Renee, trust these spirits. It never fails. And I keep recalling this to my mind. In other words, every time I want to give up, can I tell you something? Let me tell you something. Let me give you a pastor's testimony. Every time I want to give up, I recall to my mind that his love never fails.
Yes, Lord.
Every time when I want to throw in the towel, I recall to my mind that he has love that's loyal.
Yes.
That his love is committed.
Well.
And my faith is built on somehow him coming through.
Well.
Hesed, love is God's choice. See, this the thing. It's not superficial. It, 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 indigenous, indigenous, and it ain't based on me. It's his choice. It's God's decision. It is settled. It's fixed. It's final. It's a love which will never change. A love given freely and forever by God, who has now chosen sinful men and women as those he will love. I keep recalling this, that God's love me because it is his will to love me. If anybody ever not want to love yourself, have you ever been, you didn't even want to love yourself? Matter of fact, if salvation was up to you, you wouldn't even save yourself.
Lord have mercy.
But hesed love, he says, "This I recall to my mind. Therefore, here's my hope," digging our boot. It is hesed. It's the Lord's loyalty that I'm not consumed. Because his compassion never fails, okay? It is. It is a discipline of the mind and will to trust in God during a conflict. Too often, we're tempted to look around rather than to look up. Yet, that's exactly what we're supposed to do. We are to look to the Lord, to think on him and his promises to us. Paul says, "In prison, think on these things. In the palace, think on these things. In the mountain, think on these things. In the valley, think on these things." We ain't supposed to look down. We supposed to look up because our faith is on his faithfulness. And guess what? He never failed. Psalm 33:18, ESV. Before Rev read that, anybody got any comments? His faith, his faithfulness never fails. And what Jeremiah says, "I keep recalling this." You know what? I'm praying tonight from this day forth that the Holy Spirit will speak that loudly in your ear every time you feel challenged to not want to go on. And I'll pray that the Holy Spirit says, "Recall this to your mind." He has loyal love. His compassion fails not. And this is what's powerful. His compassion fails not. And guess what he yells out, Reverend Greenlee? "Great is your faithfulness." Every now and then, I have to keep reminding myself of who God is, what God has done and how much he has done for me. And after I recall this, the only thing I can say out of my mouth is, "Great is, great is your faithfulness." I'm so great. I'm, 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 great is, I'm so glad you're faithful. Great is thy faithfulness. You are my portion. Psalm 33:18.
"Behold, the eye of the Lord is on those who fear him, on those who hope in his steadfast love."
Okay, all right, can we move on? Y'all ready? The phrase, "The Lord takes notice" in the passage is more literally, "the eye of the Lord," which refers to his look of favor that is cast upon his loyal followers. And who are his loyal followers? Those who faith is built on his faithfulness. Those who are trusting in him. It is those who wait for him to demonstrate his faithfulness. Good God almighty. You, can I tell you how to get excited? Start telling yourself, first of all, tell your flesh you're dead. You gotta tell your flesh you're dead. And then you gotta let the spirit speak to your spirit. And then you have to start saying to yourself, "I'mma wait for God to demonstrate his faithfulness." I don't know who told you pastors don't go through, but if I got the lead sheet, I got the trust in God. And so I have to recall to my mind many times, I'm talking about minutes after minutes after minutes, that I got to wait for his faithfulness. He's gonna demonstrate it. I don't know how, but he's gonna demonstrate his faithfulness. "It is those who by faith take him at his word."
My God.
Yes, Lord.
Believing, he will do what is promised. The one who fails to look to God will automatically look to self and others. And whatever temporary resources this failing world can offer. If you ain't looking to God, you looking to yourself and you looking to others and you looking for the resources from a falling world. If you don't think God brought you this far to carry you on, you're not looking up. Let me help somebody here. If you don't think that God has enough strength left to carry you on, then you ain't looking up. Because here's what the saints used to say. The older saints used to say, "He brought me this far, but he ain't gonna lead me." Why would he carry you out the fire and then destroy you? If he brought me this far, I have to recall to my mind that if he brought me this far, he's gonna lead me on.
Hallelujah.
It may not be on the way you thought, but I ain't basing my faithfulness on my perception of the favor that I think he should have for me. My faith is built on his faithfulness based on his pattern in his scriptures about who he is. Okay? I got about three more slides. What time is it? Can somebody just haul out the time?
Eight forty-seven.
Oh, you got plenty of time. You got plenty of time. All right, here it is. Deuteronomy, chapter seven, verse nine, Deuteronomy, chapter thirty-two, verse four- Alright, here it is. Deuteronomy chapter seven, verse nine, Deuteronomy chapter thirty-two, verse four, ESV. Rev, can you do that? Sister Laverne, Isaiah twenty-five and one, and Isaiah forty-nine and fifteen in the ESV, if you can do that. Reverend Allen, Psalm one hundred, verse five, Psalm one nineteen, thirty, if you can do that. Sister Esther, Joshua, chapter twenty-one, verse forty-three through forty-five. Sister Rhonda, First Corinthians, chapter ten, verse thirteen. Sister Jasmine, Second Thessalonians, chapter three, verse three. Dignas Brinson, First John, chapter one, verse, verse nine. Okay, all these scriptures, I want you to highlight. Take some time, make sure they all turn there, because they very important. Deuteronomy, chapter seven, verse nine.
It reads, know therefore that the Lord your God is God, the faithful God who keeps covenant and steadfast love with those who love him and keep his commandments to a thousand generations.
Okay, he is God. He's faithful to those who keep his commandments, those who are loyal to him. You can't, you cannot not be loyal to him and want to see his faithfulness. In order to see his faithfulness, you have to be loyal to him to see it. Are y'all getting that? Okay, Deuteronomy, chapter thirty-two, verse four.
The rock, his work is perfect, for all his ways are justice. A God of faithfulness and without iniquity, just and upright is he.
The emunah of God, the steadfastness, the sturdiness, the stableness, the truth, the surety of his faithfulness, emunah. He is as faithful, and, and, and here it is, some of the images are just trying to help us out, like a rock that cannot be moved. That's how his faithfulness is. It's like a rock that cannot be moved. Isaiah twenty-five, verse one, who has that?
Oh, Lord, you are my God. I will exalt thee. I will praise your name, for you have done wonderful things, plans formed of all, faithful and sure.
My goodness. You, you hear what Isaiah saying? You have done wonderful things. Faithful, sure. Isaiah forty-nine, verse fifteen.
I have that. I'm trying to get to it. Sorry. Isaiah twenty-five?
Forty-nine.
I said it, forty-five.
Forty-nine, verse fifteen.
Okay. Wow, okay. Coming, coming, coming. Isaiah forty-nine?
Verse fifteen.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for your patience. Forty-nine, verse fifteen. And it reads, can a woman forget her nursing child that she should have no compassion on the son of her womb? Even these may forget, yet I will not forget you.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Did, did y'all circle that? Did, did that just smack us straight in our faith? That a mother, a mother will forget her own. And God said, I won't forget you.
My God.
Hey, my goodness. It, 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 you didn't even know that was in there. You didn't even know that was in there. Okay, Psalms one hundred, verse five, Psalm one nineteen, thirty. Rev?
For the Lord is good, his mercy is everlasting, and his truth endures to all generations.
Okay.
Verse thirty, I have chosen the way of truth; thy judgments have I laid before me.
That's Psalm one nineteen, thirty?
One nineteen, thirty.
Are y'all getting this? Joshua, chapter twenty-one, forty-three and forty, forty-three to forty-five. You reading, Sister Esther? We can't hear you.
Can you hear me now, or no?
We can hear you now. Go for it.
Okay. Okay, Joshua twenty-one, forty-three. And the Lord gave unto Israel all the land which he swore to give unto their fathers, and they possessed it and dwelt therein. And the Lord gave them rest roundabout according to all that he swore unto their fathers, and there stood not a man of all their enemies before them. The Lord delivered all their enemies into their hand. There fell not aught of any good thing which the Lord hath spoken unto the house of Israel. All came to pass.
Okay, somebody should have waved their hand. Verse forty-five, there fell not. Anybody seen this? There fell not. Everything he said he was gonna do for them, he did it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, First Corinthians, chapter ten, verse thirteen, who has that?
Uh, First Corinthians ten, thirteen. No temptation has overtaken you that, that is not common to man. God is faithful, and he will not let you be tempted beyond your ability. But with the temptation, he will also provide the way of escape that you may be able to endure it.
Wait for the way. He's faithful. Stop trying to create your own door. Stop. I'm getting out of here. It ain't working the way I want it. It ain't looking the way I wanted to see, I wanted to look, and you getting out of here. Wait for the door. If God don't hurry up, I'm gonna be tempted. I'mma fall short. Wait for the door. He is faithful. Okay. Uh, Second Thessalonians three and three. I hope somebody's getting this tonight.
But the Lord is faithful, who shall establish you and keep you from evil.
He is faithful. And what else is he gonna do?
Establish you and keep you from evil.
Just, just hold this. Slow down. Look at somebody. Somebody do this. Just do this to the camera. It helps. Like, just slow down. He is faithful. He's gonna establish you. He's gonna keep you from evil. First John, chapter one, verse nine.
If we confess our sins, he is faithful and just to forgive us our sins and to cleanse us from all unrighteousness.
Well, who told you he won't forgive you? Who told you he won't forgive you? The Bible says, he is faithful to forgive. Who told you he wouldn't forgive you? Man created that lie. Oh, that's a, I don't know. I don't know if God gonna forgive you. Well, I will turn to First John one and nine and have faith in his faithfulness, that he is faithful to forgive. Anybody getting this? Okay, it's, it's, I, I got some notes. I got some notes for you. I got, I got some notes for you. I got some notes. You gotta write this down. These simple notes here. Are you ready? God's faithfulness changes us. His faithfulness changes us. His faithfulness changes us. Oh, boy. Out of all the teachings, all them grippin' me. This one gripping me hard tonight, saints. God's faithfulness changes us.
Yes, it does.
This thing won't let go of me. It won't let go of me. God's faithfulness gives us value. Uh, Lord, just let me get through it. God's faithfulness gives us value. God's faithfulness cleanses us. Uh-huh. One thing I know is, he faithful in chasing me. He's faithful in that. But he's also faithful in bringing me out. His faithfulness cleanses us. God's faithfulness is beyond us. That's why it's the evidence of things not seen. Because his faithfulness, how he gonna show up on, listen, can I say to somebody tonight, how he is going to show up for you is beyond what you can imagine or even think of. The way God's gonna show up for you, you ain't gonna never see it coming. Because God's faithfulness is beyond us. The way he gonna come through for you, you're not even gonna imagine it. All you gonna say to yourself is, great it, Lord, I pray this week, that someone will say, great is thy faithfulness. God's faithfulness is beyond us. God's faithfulness is enough for us. Faithful is enough for me. Our rewards as believers depend upon our faithfulness, our rewards. But our salvation is on his faithfulness. While we cannot harmonize God's mysterious dealings with the decoration of his love, we wait on him for more light. In his own good time, he will make it plain to you. Okay, these are last two scriptures, Second Timothy, verse two, chapter two, verse thirteen, ESV. Uh, Reverend Greenlee, if you can just turn there, and then John thirteen, seven, I want you to read this. Matter of fact, let me, let me switch over to that as well. Second Timothy, go for it, Rev.
It reads, if we are faithless, he remains faithful. He cannot deny himself.
Oh, my goodness. Did y'all know that was in there? Did y'all know that was in there? Even if you are unfaithful, can I tell you something? You wasn't as faithful as you acting like you were today, but he woke you up. Because he's faithful to the time that he's allotted your life to live. And he ain't gonna shorten it, and he ain't gonna add it. He gonna be faithful to it. And even when we're not faithful, he is faithful because he can't deny himself. Good God almighty. He can't, even if he wanted to, but he don't want to because he can't. So he can't deny himself of being faithful. See, you might as well just separate what people do and what God is, who he is, and what he does. And you can come out your mouth and say, God is faithful. Whether you like it or not, he is faithful. Whether you think so or not, he is faithful. Whether you believe it or not, he is faithful. Whether you want it or not, he is faithful. The one thing we do know for sure, based on the pattern of God since the beginning of the world, is that God is faithful. He was not gonna leave Christ in the grave. He was the resurrected Savior. He cannot stay in the grave if he's called a resurrected Savior. So God could not leave him, the Father, leave him in the grave. He will not deny his faithfulness. John, chapter thirteen, verse seven.
Jesus answered him, what I am doing you do not understand now, but afterward you will understand.
Okay, here it is. Your rewards, my rewards, is upon our faithfulness towards him. But our salvation is his, is faithfulness towards us. That's why you can't touch salvation, because that was his faithfulness towards us. And we may not be able to add and line up his mysterious dealings or his declarations of love. What we do, we wait on him for more light. Stay right there, right where you are. Stay right there, right where you are. Right where you are. This I recall to my mind. Therefore have I hope tonight. It is of the Lord's mercy that we are not consumed. Because his compassion fails not. They are new every morning. Great is his faithfulness.
Hallelujah.
Great is his faithfulness. Great is.
Yes, yes, yes. Yes, yes, yes.
Great is his faithfulness. Great is his faithfulness.
Powerful. That was powerful.
Great is his faithfulness.
Hallelujah.
I may make a promise, and I may not come through it.
Well.
One, I do know who will never deny himself.
Jesus.
God. And even when you and I are unfaithful, he will not deny himself.
Hallelujah.
My goodness. See, see, you, you hear people say those scriptures, and they don't even know what they saying.
My God.
Great is thy faithfulness.
Hallelujah, hallelujah.
I mean, Dikka Thomas, great is his faithfulness. Did he not come through for you? Did he not come through for you, Reverend Greenlee? Did he not come for you, Renee? Did he not come for you and through? Great is thy faith, God, great is thy faithfulness. My, hallelujah. Loyal. I haven't been truthful. I haven't been honest. I haven't been pure. I haven't been sure. I haven't always been righteous, but great is your faithfulness towards me.
Glory.
Great is your faithfulness. The faithfulness of God. Come back, we'll look at the grace of God. How many can say the, the in-depth look at the excellencies of God has really increased your trust and your faith in him? My faith is not built on man, because man will fail you.
Well.
It ain't built on politicians. It ain't built on kings. It's not built on queens. Some trust in chariots, some trust in horses, but we will trust in the name of the Lord.
Hallelujah.
Our faith is
Glory to God.
His faithfulness.
Jesus.
So the Holy Spirit, he works my faith and reminds me, so I can recall the pattern of God who never fails. Sister Laverne, he never fails. Pray that. Sister Charlene, he never fails. Pray that. Dikka Thomas, he never fails. Pray that back to him. Sister Rhonda, he never fails. Let him know, I know you never fail. I know you never fail. I know you won't fail. I know I'll fall, and I'll fail, but I know you won't fail. You have a reputation of always coming through. Just give me an understanding and the strength to wait on who you are. Anybody want to make a comment based on tonight's topic before we close? Anyone? Anyone?
Yes, I just want to say that is so powerful. In all my life, all the trials that I've been through, he's always changed me, he's always been faithful. He made a difference, he was still faithful, and that was so awesome to me that I haven't seen him, that was so faithful.
Hallelujah.
He's so.
Hallelujah.
I thank you, Lord, I thank you.
If this, the word of God doesn't move you, I don't know what will. The only one can't be moved is a dead person.
Yes, yes, yes.
Anybody else before we close?
I'm ready, Pooja. Will I see you Saturday?
Anybody else want to comment before? You'll see him Saturday if the Lord's will, Sister Kenny.